I will call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Come on roll.
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Michelson?
Yes.
Mary Gates?
Yes. Citizen comments, if anyone would like to speak to the council now would be the time.
My name's Tim Michelson.
Tim, you wanna stand up to the mic, it won't broadcast but it'll pick it up for the.
My name's Tim Michelson and my wife Jeanne Michelson is here with me tonight. I have agreements with being pulled into the city of Morris simply for the fact that I, what I do in business is not something that should be in the city limits because the point is that it's gonna create too much havoc for me and it's gonna be an absolute detriment to my business as far as complaints go and everything else. It's not that I'm doing anything wrong out there, it's just not nice to look at. But, somebody has to take care of that kind of stuff in life and that's what I was brought up doing. So I'm still doing it and I plan on keep doing it and I wanna pass it on to my son sometime or another. Sure, it might not be near as much because I am getting smaller, smaller, smaller. But, it's something that's been in the family for years and I just assume try to keep it in the family as much as I can and keep on doing it as long as I can. It really has no benefit to me whatsoever to pull within city limits that I can see, that I can understand at all. Not whatsoever, I have a state highway in front of me. I do my own snow and everything else. There's nothing else around me that needs to be taken care of but pasture and cattle and fields. Yeah, I just come to say my points, try to get it across that it's gonna be a real detriment to me. And, it is, as far as I can see, it's just gonna create havoc. Right now, the way things are, it's working pretty good. I try to keep it as clean as I can, I planted four whole rolls of trees in the backside of the property, tried to cover up a little bit more, I was gonna put some more trees in this coming summer again. I got a guy coming in, he's gonna get rid of the refuge pile for me, he's gonna take care of that in another month's time here. I try to keep things as neat as I can, I try to keep things mowed up as best I can. It just, yeah, it's gonna create a real problem for me. I get pulled in simply for the ordinances that are in place and everything else. So, I'd sure appreciate it if you'd take that in consideration and thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay. Any other citizen comments? We have no public hearing tonight, we do have to be done by six o'clock so we're gonna rock on through this as much as we can. Reading and approval of minutes for two twenty-two twenty-two.
I will move approval of the regular minutes from February twenty-two meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. And we have the condensed version of the same minutes.
I'll move approval of the condensed version for two twenty-two twenty-two.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. I will make a motion to add a number D under consent agenda, the pay estimate number four for Riley Brothers twenty-twenty public improvement projects.
I'll second.
Any discussion? And that came in your email this afternoon. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Okay, consent agenda. I will move approval of the consent agenda which consists of audit of city bills, the February transit report, application for exempt permit and the added pay estimate number four for Riley Brothers.
That added pay estimate, that looks like that's the final payment, I read that correctly?
Right, for twenty, twenty, what was that, twenty-twenty?
Twenty-twenty.
Yep.
Line item ten, just mileage reimbursement for that five-eight-five. Seems like a lot of money, having.
Was that, that was for.
Jacob?
Yeah, that was for an individual that came to Morris that we're trying to hire for the LCCMR job that Chris Watkins had and, and actually he didn't wind up taking the job so now we're gonna have to try to find somebody else. That grant program is open and we have to try to finish it out and we don't wanna reimburse money back so it was our best hope at the time, we think we might have identified somebody else but he asked if we would bring him here and put him up and, and pay his mileage and I agreed to do that.
Good.
So that's what.
Does that come out of the grant then?
Uh, it either comes out of the grant or unallocated. But, you know, it's, it's one of those things where trying to find people and to get them here to Morris to take a look is getting more difficult. And I'll talk about the public works director position when we get to the city manager newsletter. And that's the IRS mileage rate that we would pay anybody else.
The snow alert towing charges and things, I'm assuming we're coming out on that, that's just a pass-through expense? Thirteen thousand or twenty?
Yeah, they have to pay the towing charges.
That's line item thirty-eight.
I noticed the transit report is kinda coming back online, I don't know how that fits into a normal year. I think pretty good. It'll be over fifty thousand passengers.
Yeah, I think a good year was like seventy, so.
Yeah, it's coming back.
Just a question going forward with the, the project at the airport with Riley Brothers and the contract and them splitting up. I mean, is that something that gets redone with agreement we have with them? Or is it still an agreement that's going forward that they signed into when they took the project they need to finish out and?
Yeah, so that's, that's the way it's gonna work. So any contracts we have with Riley Brothers, they have to finish them out. And they, they know that, they understand that and they have to work through that. The next bid, bid you see for the airport is probably gonna be Joe Riley Construction and not Riley Brothers, cuz that's, that's the new, I think I saw the new logo for his, for his company somewhere on, on Facebook but that's, that's gonna be what happens. But yeah, they have to finish out all the contracts that they have cuz all the performance bonds, everything are in their name and if for some reason they, they don't finish them out or they, they fail to do what they're supposed to be doing then that, that would be the guarantee that, that, that stuff would be taken care of. And, and everything to date indicates that they're, they're doing that. You know, they're, they're trying, actually I think that's, some of what we're seeing is they're trying to clear up some of the old stuff and get it out of the way before they move forward.
Thank you.
Well, we're talking about expenses and such, with the, as we all know, fuel, the cost of fuel is going up. I mean, is that gonna, I know it's gonna impact us obviously but do we have any kind of built-in mechanism? I don't know what the right word is for the increase to.
Yeah, yeah, we have budget, we have budget reserves that would cover any shortfalls that we'd have and then, you know, we'd take a look at how it's gonna go cuz it's, it's going up fast right now.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna get to be an issue for sure for everybody and cost to us, city businesses going up.
Well, heating's another big one that we talked about. You know, our, our winter heating bills because the heating costs are going up. So we'll be taking a look at that and then, but, you know, if we do wind up having a problem within the budget, you know, we have reserves to cover that but then the next budget, you know, we'll have to take a look at that and make adjustments with that one. And then, you know, we'll see, I have no idea what's gonna happen at the state with regards to additional funding that might come down because of their surplus. But it's possible that we might get more local government aid and that might be one of the reasons why they put a little bit more money in there is to help cities try to cover some of their additional costs.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I don't know what our usage is during the month but if you look at the transit report, that's, you know, fourteen hundred gallons just for, just for the transit.
Right.
So. It's, it's not gonna be a small amount for the city, total for the city. Anything else on the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. This is requests and communications, we have non-ordinances and resolutions. We have an ordinance number seventeen annexing in Morris Township property.
Yeah, so I think, I think you, you had the information sent to you including a map. So if you look at any one of our city maps, you see a big square island of Morris Township land that's in the city limits. And this issue, actually I didn't bring up this issue but what came up was when the county was looking at the county commissioner districts and you, you actually brought this issue up at your last meeting, I think. Cuz there's some language in there that talked about a portion or a part of our precinct that was gonna be attached to one of the county commissioner districts. Well, that's what we're talking about and so when they're looking at, uh, right in there where Brian's pointing, that's what we're looking at. So that's, and I've always wondered why that island of township land is in the city limits or is in, it's township land in the city limits. You know, cuz our limit is the, the white line and it's all around this piece of property and so then when the county was looking at their county commissioner districts, technically you should have your, all the property that's in a voting district contiguous so it should be connected to, to itself and that one's not connected to any township land outside or, outside the city limits cuz it's completely surrounded by the city limits. And so then, I think Stephanie talked to the Secretary of State, Stephanie Buss and, or talking about, you know, what do you do, you know, to make sure that your commissioner districts are set up, you know, the right way legally and stuff like that? Well then, the suggestion was made to annex it in. And so I actually went to the person who takes care of annexing in property in the state of Minnesota and she pulled up all of our data back in nineteen seventy-eight. The, the four townships in the city and the county all agreed that the city would have authority to regulate the property within the city limits and an area outside of the city limits. And, and then in two thousand seven, I think, I don't, you were here, I don't know if Jeff was here for the annexation. So in two thousand seven, the city passed a resolution approving an agreement to annex in property. In that agreement was specific language that prohibited us from annexing in this property for fifteen years. It was January two thousand seven. So for fifteen years, we weren't allowed to annex in that property. We could annex in the university property, that's part of that parcel, that, that area but we couldn't annex in Michelson's. And, and now we can. And the, the way the state rules work is that if you're completely surrounded by the city limits, the city can do an ordinance to annex in that property. And then we, we have to submit that ordinance to the state of Minnesota, they review it and then they'll, they'll give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. And so I'm talking to the person that actually is the one that does all that stuff and they, they, the ordinance that you, you have before you, we tweaked it. There's a new one that you were sent out and it's tweaked just a little bit because one of the requirements in state, state laws that we have to pay the township an amount equal to the taxes that they would've got off that property. University property is not taxable so it's only Tim Michelson and his wife for the homestead and then Tim Michelson for the business that he has there. And the total taxes for that property is, for the township is like a hundred and fifty-seven, whatever it is there. But we have to pay him in two payments, not one. And so the new ordinance splits it into two payments.
We have to pay the township?
The township, two payments. According to state law, it says exactly how you have to pay him, that, that money. And then the other thing that, Star Holman is the name of the person that handles all this. The other thing she said is that you have to give thirty-day written notice by certified mail to the property owners in there and the abutting property owners. Well, the property owners are Tim Michelson, Tim Michelson and his wife and the border regions of the university on the inside of the island. On the outside, it's the border regions, the city of Morris, the natural gas company and Riley Brothers property. And that's, you know, we actually included the state of Minnesota cuz the state highway runs through there too. And so thirty-day notice by certified mail. If for some reason that doesn't come back right away, we might be pushing it April twelfth to, to make that legal. So we're recommending that we push that, the second reading and the public hearing back to April twenty-sixth. And, and then we would have a public hearing, you could take input from the public on it. I've talked to everybody, I've talked to Tim Michelson, I've talked to the Ace Spears, the township chair. I talked to Jeff Hufford, who's the township clerk. I've talked to Brian Herman and Lee Johnson who represent the, the university. And, and so everybody knows what's going on. And the one thing I would say and not, I, I don't think you wanna to get into a discussion tonight about this cuz you're simply gonna set the hearing date. But you heard the owner say he doesn't wanna go in to the city limits cuz he doesn't want us to control him and we've been controlling him since nineteen seventy-eight.
That would be my question is, is, Aaron could maybe answer it. By coming into the city, what things change for him? Because I, I mean, I could understand his point of view if something's going to change.
Nothing changes, he's already, he's already under our ordinances already.
But what, what could change, what are we not enforcing maybe?
He's grandfathered in, you can't legislate a business out of existence when you pull him into a city or create a new ordinance. Existing businesses get to operate that way as long as they are continuous. And I think we ran into this with the bus garage a little bit because the bus garage discontinued operating as a business for more than a year so then they no longer have grandfather status. But Michelson's, as long as they stay in business, they, they will.
Under the same ownership, what if he passes it on to his children?
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, it just follows the business, not the owner.
Okay, okay, I, yeah, I'm just, I mean, I, I sympathize with his spot that I wouldn't want to bring, do something that would, you know, be detrimental to his business where they could change things for him, where he can't operate the way that he currently is or. I mean, I understand that cuz it's, I don't know that it really does a lot for us just to annex it in if it's gonna, I wouldn't be in favor of it if it's gonna hurt him in any way.
Yeah, and so when I came in two thousand seven, you know, we finally finished the zoning map and that was the question that was brought up by then. He said, you know, if I come into the city limits and you're gonna put me out of business, I go, we can't. You know, and so that came up when I talked to him last week. He goes, I don't want, I don't, and I think it's an interesting discussion when you talk about, well, it's not the nicest thing to have in the city limits, it's in the city limits. So it's already here, so if you're worried about somebody seeing it, looking at it, having to deal with it, all those kind of things, they already are because you're completely surrounded by the city. We have a road on one side, there's a highway on the other side, there's a, there's a, actually it's a state highway three, what is it, three sixteen?
Three twenty-nine.
Three twenty-nine, that's on the other, I mean, you're completely surrounded by the city already. And so the idea that, you know, if you bring me in, and so one of the things I will tell you is that, I think, cuz I've talked to the township officials, it's like, well, you can say whatever you wanna say and it's like, well, I can give you a letter from, from me stipulating that you're grandfathered in as a business and that, that you can, you can turn it over to your son, you can sell it, you can do all of that. But, but, you know, and then that gives you what you need, you know, but it's like, well, what kind of regulations are you gonna impose on me? None, because they're already there. Everything is there now that, that, cuz we control him. He's in a municipal conservancy zone and, and he has to follow the rules within that.
He already asked, so even if, even if we did annex him in and we changed some rules, he still would have to abide by that because he's surrounded by us, is that correct? So I mean.
Well, he's within that municipal.
Okay, well, I mean, that, so I mean, that, that makes sense and, you know, it's not, whether you're in or you're out, you're still gonna have to abide by whatever the decisions are going forward.
Now, if you don't take action, how does that affect the election districts? Does it have any impact on that at all?
I could show you if you want.
Yeah, please.
So, the issue comes up, right now, this little island is in the district with the rest of Morris Township and because it's Morris Township property, which creates non-contiguous property. The, the law says that all districts have to be contiguous, they have to be, flow together, they have to touch. And so if the county were to send this to the state the way it is with this property as part of the, as separate from everything else, it would be, it's illegal, they can't do it. So there's two solutions to it, either do this, annex, annex the property or you create a second district voting precinct in the township. That's the only two solutions that you can have for it. And it's gonna be a problem in perpetuity because, you know, every, every time you have an election, you gotta create within Morris Township another separate district just for this one owner.
Right.
One.
So we're going from four districts to, or three districts to four?
No, the township.
This is township.
It's a precinct, it's a precinct in the voting precinct.
In their township.
Gotcha, okay.
How about the trailer court, we discussed that two weeks ago, that is also not included, correct?
Right, so that's outside the city limits.
Okay, so that is.
So the, so the process to annex them is completely different.
So they're, they have an edge that's outside, so it's not.
Yep, and they are contiguous with the rest of their township that they're part of.
So, that whole, I don't know what it is, trapezoid or whatever it is. That whole thing, that is not all Michelson's land. Michelson's land is only on the far east portion of.
So the rest is, the university has some on both side of the highway.
And that's, and that just was never annexed in either, really?
No, no. You know, because it's, 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 because it's like a group. And so then actually in, in two thousand seven when that agreement was done, the city could've, I think the city could've annexed in the university part of it. And then you would add a very small little island of township land sitting there. But I think, you know, and somebody said to me, well, why, why didn't they do it back then? And you guys were part of it. So I, I would venture to guess that when the argument started on that, it was much easier just to say, you know what? Let's leave this alone. We'll leave this alone.
Remember also.
Yeah, we'll just leave this alone, it's not that, we're only talking two people. You know, because I think at the time you're doing annexation, you're talking about population, bringing in population and so, so you could, rather than sit and argue about everything, you could get them agree to do that and then do this and then everything was done. You know, but ironically, cuz I've looked at this probably twice or three times over the time that I've been here because it's like every time you turn around, it's like, why is that way? Especially the university property. Cuz all the other university property is, 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 you know, either in the city limits or it's outside there, the outside line, the way it's set up. But, but it's just, it's, it's a good time to do it, you know, to, you know, because it's gonna solve. And so then for, for us, our, our precinct is around it. So once that comes into the city limits, we don't have to do anything else with our voting precinct. They just wind up being in it and that, the, it's already delineated that they'd be part of it.
And likewise, the county would just be part of that.
Right, the county, it's all together.
Then they wouldn't have to, they wouldn't have to address it.
So this whole area is gonna get, are we looking at changing the university property and Michelson's property, correct?
Right.
Not just the Michelson property?
Yeah.
But the, the only, the only owners of that property in that area is the university and Michelson's.
Michelson's, yep. And then there's, there's a parcel that the state of Minnesota has where the highway is. But that's, yeah.
So, and so tax-wise, university, that's a non-issue?
Their, their tax exempt.
What will Mr. Michelson's taxes, what would that, what will that do to Mr. Michelson's taxes?
I, I haven't calculated that, but we could, I mean it's.
It's gonna go up, right?
There's two, there's gonna be taxes on his house but it's homesteaded based upon the value of his property and then there'll be taxes on the commercial part of that cuz he does have a commercial business operation with, with at least one building there. I don't know what's back in the woods there, if he's got another building that, that he has stuff in there. But, so they just pay whatever the city tax rate is.
Right.
Yep.
Which was probably gonna be more than he pays in his township, probably considerably more.
Yeah, he's only paying, he paid about ten times, or he probably paid around fifteen hundred bucks, I'm guessing.
Right.
A year.
That's what he pays.
It's being a hundred and fifty-seven or whatever.
That was the.
That's all, that's all he pays now?
That's the township.
That's the township tax.
That's the township share.
Share, yeah.
He pays the same county taxes and school taxes.
Yeah, that won't change, right.
City, but then it would be, you know, you'd bring in more value into the city and that would spread the city taxes out on, it's not much, but just a little bit more. But, that would be, you know, and that's what I said, you know, the, you know, when I talked to him, I, I said, to me, the issue isn't control because we already control you. The issue, the issue would be taxes and he talks about hunting in there too. But, if he's gun hunting in there next to the road and the bike path and the highway and all that kinda stuff, I don't know that that's a, I, I, that's probably not a good place to be doing that. There's a lot of deer around there but, you know, that's, that, you know, that's one of those things.
Could he legally hunt in that section right now?
I think, I think, depending on how.
Yeah, I don't think, I'm not sure but.
Will that be like saying somebody can go right out there behind the university then and hunt?
Well, there's a difference between township land, farmland and city land, yeah, so.
You can't hunt within city limits, I'm assuming. So if they're, if he's under the same rules as, as the city, he shouldn't be able to hunt in that property either.
Right.
Or, okay, Aaron, give me the.
There is, you cannot fire a gun in a municipality, that's a state law.
Just so I'm clear, if he's at, if he's in the city limits right now, he's not paying county taxes, is he?
Yeah.
He is.
We all are.
Yeah, we all are.
Okay.
Yeah, we all pay county and school taxes.
I just pay it.
Yeah.
Should pay more attention to that.
I'll send mine your way, that's all you're gonna do it.
Yeah, let me know how you're figuring it out cuz.
Yeah, let me know how you're figuring it out, cause. But the only thing that's grandfatherable is the existing business. If family member or some other type of business comes in, it's not, as we learned again through the bus garage.
Right.
It's gotta be that specific business.
You know, and we have other places like that, you know, Chandler, Wilbert, you know, Brown, Wilbert down there on Seventh Street. They're, they're a non-conforming, that's what you're called, is a non-conforming use that's grandfathered in. You know, and you can't expand it, so you can't buy more land and expand it out. And he can't do whatever he wants on that land, cause it's, it's controlled. So our ordinances already pretty much control him.
Modifications to the existing business? Like Chandler or Michelson, as far as if they wanted to, to make changes or do things? I mean, when we were going through some of that East Seventh Street issues, that they had talked about expansion or building on, and I don't think that was allowable at that time.
You know, the, I think the state rules changed. Cause it used to be that if, if you had a fire and it destroyed your property more than fifty percent, you couldn't rebuild. But I think they passed a new law that you could rebuild your business back, because it wouldn't be fair if you couldn't do that, but.
You just can't expand it.
You can't expand it.
Okay, you can build back or within your existing, but you can't expand.
I wanna clarify too, you cannot recklessly discharge a firearm with a, with a municipality under state law. I'm not really sure what our ordinance says. I'd have to look that up to see.
Recklessly. Recklessly.
Kinda the way I used to hunt. Okay, and what we're doing here with this, with this ordinance is we're just doing the first reading, setting up the second reading and public hearing.
Yeah, and then we'll send out the notices tomorrow to everybody.
So the first reading would be tonight, the second reading would be April twenty-sixth?
April twenty-sixth at five twenty, I think is when we do them here in the city council chambers.
Then obviously the effective date and the April, or the publication date would be pushed back.
Pushed back a week and, yep.
Couple of weeks, I guess.
Yeah, couple of weeks.
But we would certainly have to expect to talk to Mr. Michelson at the public hearing.
Right.
And there, there, there's really no benefit to the city. It's basically a little bit of clarification to the township.
Well, it's, it, it cleans up the map.
Yeah, I mean.
Doesn't seem like a, a minor thing, but really it's not. You know, based on the county and the, and the, and the vote, and the voting things. You know, so really it's, it's, it's not a little thing. And, uh, but I, I, honestly, the biggest change, I think, is he's gonna have to pay more taxes.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, that's, I would feel that, you know, more taxes, does it make me feel better that the map looks better?
Well, I know, I understand.
I have, yeah, I have a problem with that.
Yeah, and it's not so much the map looks, it's, you have township-controlled property within your city limits.
That's entirely encircled by city limits.
And it sits right next to our well field. And we have no control over the township land, other than the zoning rules and stuff like that. But, you know, you know, cause that, one of the questions that came up is, sure, now you're gonna, you know, cause he knows all that. You know, and it's like, it wouldn't be us, it would be the state of Minnesota. It wouldn't matter if you're in the township or if you're in the city limits. You know, he's by a river, he's by, you know, an aquifer, he's by a number of other things. And I don't know what the rules and regulations that he has with the state of Minnesota when he's running an operation like that. And it doesn't really affect us, cause we don't license operations like that. You know, but, um, it just makes no sense to have township-controlled land within your city limits.
That municipal conservatory zone, we, is that the only one we have in the city?
No, no, there's other ones. And it's a very big zone. You know, and, I mean, it's, you can see it on the map if we wanna.
Creeping up on.
Like over by Levine, Levine Slough is one of them. So I can maybe come out here and just sort of. Yeah, so you can see how big that area is, and here's this big square here. That's in there. But we have, we have, by Lake Crystal, we have some, we have some over by Levine. Family care parks and municipal conservancy and.
Is the tax rate different for that zone or not?
No.
No?
You know, the, the biggest thing is that it's very limited in what you can do. Although we do have two new houses that are gonna be coming up in that area. But to build a house in municipal conservancy, you have to have five acres or more to be able to build. You know, so it's not gonna have a dense population in there. And, and as far as I know, uh, in the ordinance, there's, it doesn't, the flood plain doesn't affect, affect them there.
So the little yellow spot down on the bottom below that is the Riley's Townhomes?
Yep.
So that, that gets rid of that exemption for the five acre lot?
Yeah, when that was plotted out, I don't, you know, that was before I was here. You know, because this, this map is dated with the fifteenth. And actually, I think it was like two thousand eleven, we finally finished. You know, like I said, when I got here in two thousand seven, the zoning map for the city was not done. And it was, cause people were fighting over getting re-zoned out of their business. And, and there's some farming issues, raising cattle and, and stuff like that. And, and, and I told everybody that we can't do that. You know, so you're all good, you know, we can't take you out of business, we can't. And then it was like, within a month, they all agreed to it and we finished it. You know, and, and talking to the township board, you know, they're looking out for their own person in the township. But at the same time, you know, for me as a city manager, it's, it's, you have township land that's controlled by the township within your own city limits. And it shouldn't be that way. And, and the state of Minnesota makes it very easy to annex it in, cause if you're completely surrounded by the city, then they don't, they don't have the same rules that you have to go, go through to be able to annex that property, cause you're already in the city limits.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yep.
We on time, mister? Am I here to keep things moving?
Um, yes, yes. Um, I'm just reading through the, rereading. Um, so we have the, uh, first reading of the ordinance. Anybody wanna move on that?
I'll move on the first reading of ordinance number one seventeen of the city of Morris, annexing land located in the Morris Township.
Hold on a second.
All right, and then that, that sets up the second reading for April twenty-sixth. Um, at five fifteen.
With the public hearing?
Five twenty, yeah.
At that time?
So any further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote on the ordinance, please.
Yes.
Salvi?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Ellison?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, city manager's report and recommendations, motion to secure Morris Floi, Floral Building. To secure it, meaning.
Cover up the holes.
Cover up the holes.
Oh, that's what you mean.
I mentioned something about the garage door, and I understand somebody might have stole the garage door, so I don't know.
We stole the garage door?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I heard. I, um, so I, I did talk to, uh, uh, the people that are involved with buying this building. They're still working on buying this building. And I said, we've been through this twice. I think the, the thing that they're looking at now is asbestos. I think they determine there's no environmental issues that they have to worry about. They're talking about looking at asbestos and, um, and I said, well, I'm gonna go ahead and do this. And if for some reason you guys figure out a closing date on buying this place, then you can let me know. Otherwise, probably what I'm gonna do is just have the public works guys go over there with some plywood and start covering up holes in that building for now. Cause it's not gonna be torn down for a while. You know, if, if they get all their stuff put in place to do that. But like I said in my memo, uh, Mr. Melberg's out of there, his business is out of there. And so there shouldn't be anybody going in that building now.
Will this be billable to the new owners or billable to the existing owners, what we're gonna do, or?
So right now, Mr. Melberg owns it.
Right.
So it's gonna be billable to Mr. Melberg, and then we'll put it on the taxes. And then when the closing takes place, they have to take care of the taxes.
Perfect, perfect.
And we're gonna have a positive, or a, a drop dead date. If you're not done with it, we will do it when we give them this notice.
Right, yeah, cause I'm gonna probably send out a letter tomorrow and then, uh.
Well, just, yeah, just, we've been working on it for.
Yeah, I'm only gonna give them a week. To, to do it.
Thank you.
Cause it's just, yeah.
Okay, um, I will make a motion that we go ahead and, uh, with that process to, uh, secure that building.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
City manager report.
So I'll do two things. One is, uh, we got another retirement coming up. So today Sandy Anderson let me know that she's gonna be retiring as of April first.
Ooh, wow.
So, uh, um, so, yeah. So it's, everybody's jumping ship. But no, she's worked for the city of Morris since September of nineteen eighty. So almost forty-two years. Um, I, I.
I guess she can, huh?
I, I originally started in May of nineteen eighty, so Sandy came in September, uh, after, after I started. And then, of course, I moved up to Brackenridge for a while. But, uh, yeah, so I, you know, I think she, she wants to move on to the next part of her life. And so then, uh, we're gonna take a look internally. Um, I got some ideas of what I'm gonna do and, and, um, and then we'll, we'll go from there. But, uh, yeah, so Jim's leaving the end of the month and Sandy's leaving the end of the month.
Wow.
Uh, the other thing is just answering any questions you might have, cause I know we only have five minutes left, but, uh.
Yeah, actually, we have, uh, two minutes.
Two minutes left.
Public Works position, uh, obviously it's, you're closing down the applications. Uh, is it just in-house candidates? We got out-of-house candidates?
I haven't, I haven't looked at them yet.
Haven't seen anything?
The first, I think we had five or six applications. The first step in the process is for Sandy to redact any information that I, I might look at that would indicate, you know, race, sex, all, all those kinda things. And then I'll look, so I have that folder now, so I'll take a look at them and see who's applied. And I know there's at least a couple of internal ones for sure. But, uh, you know, it's really hard to get people to apply for stuff now. You know, and if for some reason it doesn't look like there's a good candidate, I got some other ideas and some things that I might consider doing. You know, with regards to how, how we're staffed and how we operate. But, uh, we'll, we'll take it from there. So then the next step is to figure out who I wanna interview and do some interviews and then try to figure out who to pick. But, yeah, it's, you know, in some, some cases, it's hard to get people to come out, come out here.
I was curious.
Yep.
Okay, any, uh, any other questions on the city manager report? Anything else to come before the council?
It's that time of year again, and I, I, I forget the cause, but the sewer smell like on South Street, you get around Oregon or California, it's just nasty.
Yeah, it's Lake Crystal.
Is there?
So then, uh, actually, I, I, I sent out an email to, uh, um, Bolton Mank. And I think we're gonna probably reach out to the DNR and US Fish and Wildlife and see if they have any ideas. But, you know, basically, Lake Crystal keeps flowing through that storm sewer system. And then that's kind of a, it runs along the tracks over by the, uh, um, fairgrounds and it comes back through and then comes underneath. But you can imagine, it's like your sewer system at home, anything underground is gonna carry, carry smells. I know we had a problem with the hospital where their, their, their roof vents or their roof drainage was going down into the storm sewer. And so then the smell would come back up to the top of the roof. Now they got their air vents sucking it in. And they, I think they had a pipe that was not disconnected that tied into the sewer, the storm sewer, and it was bringing the smell back through. But, um, you know, it could be that we have to totally enclose that pipe system. Could be that we have to open it up and put an aeration system on the edge of Lake Crystal to try to keep it from smelling or something.
So it must come to the surface somewhere between Lake Crystal and before you get to the fire department there, correct? Cause it goes under, it must be underneath.
On the other side of the railroad tracks.
Other side of railroad tracks and on the, the, both sides of it.
Where, does it come through that, that?
It used to come through like by Senex South, just on the tracks there, just.
It must come out there right by. Fire department, on that culvert, it comes, it comes through that culvert?
I think it's open cut in front of the, the Lee Center down to, uh, the, the culvert. And then the culvert goes underneath the railroad tracks, and then it's open cut for just a little while. And then it's.
Then it goes into the storm sewer.
Under the fire department or beside.
Yeah, then it goes out through, cause we don't get that kinda smell down where it opens up along Green River Road, you know, out by the tennis courts and all that. That, you don't get that smell then.
Yeah, you'd think you would.
You think you would, but you don't.
Well, I think, I think it vents out. Coming out on the, the catch basins.
Yeah. Used to be it was all open when we were kids. It was completely open from Lake Crystal.
Everybody asked me, that's what I tell them, I said, it's Green River, it's just flowing.
Right.
It is Green River.
It's open in certain spots there and then, yeah, that's, we should really, we need to probably cap that.
Well, some of that's gassing off too, from Lake Crystal itself.
Yeah. Right.
Yep. Anything, uh, anything else to come before the council? All right, meeting adjourned at six o'clock.
I wonder, uh.
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
Neither one gets, neither one gets the Riley.
Don't see many kayaks.
Neither one gets the Riley name.
Riley Brothers. So the way John Riley construction and Joe Riley construction, I think that's the name. And then you got Jim Riley.
No, they, no, it's, it's, I don't get it.